Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. We are now in session. I would ask that you turn off or silence your mobile phones so we are not interrupted tonight. Just a couple of procedural things. We ask that participants, or applicants, rather, that are presenting come down to this center podium and speak into that microphone. Please announce your name and your case will be read by our clerk. Any public comment will please speak over that microphone there. We ask that you come down this side of the auditorium and return to your seats up the other side, just so there's one-way traffic here in the auditorium. I will take a minute to announce the board. To my right is Bob Signetti, Becky Kilborn, our clerk Ken Scholes, myself, I'm John Bounder, the chair. We have Jeff Sauer and our two alternates, Ken Javini and Corinne Doherty. From our code administration department, we have our building inspector, Mr. Rich Maloney, and our secretary Kathleen Archibald. I don't think we have any new cases that we really need to go over the procedure, but we will ask that, once the clerk reads your case, come up and present your case. The board will then ask you questions. From there, we will turn it over for public comment, and from there, we'll come back to the board for deliberations. We ask that we're not interrupted during those deliberations, but you are part of the public meeting process, able to hear our comments live right here in front of you. With that said, I believe we have minutes from September 28th. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
Second.
Can I get a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? With that said, did anyone say anything? We're good to go. Mr. Clerk, if you could, our first continued case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first continued case is Mark Spear, docket 20-4874, appealing the building inspector's decision regarding a variance from April 7th, 1975, docket 0-1025, in accordance with the Danvers zoning bylaws at 55 Wyndham Street. This is zoned R3.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Just before you get started, so just to kind of bring you up to speed where the board's at, we're in receipt of affidavits from Mr. Daniel Wilds of one of your tenants, I believe it's Agway. Another affidavit from David Haven, do I have that right?
Haven.
Haven, from Haven Builders. And a third affidavit from Mr. Geniulis. Geniulis, I think I have, from TT.
Geniulis.
Excavating. So we're in receipt of those affidavits that are stating they don't have their base of operations at your site. We also were advised by town council on this case, and it's of their opinion, as long as you are adhering to these, you know, four mentioned items, which is neat and orderly condition. I'm just summarizing here. Premises not used for a base of operation, outside storage limited to two and a half times the floor area of the building, and that there shall be no work except for between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So this board had asked town council to kind of look at not only the 1975 variance that was granted, but also the court case that went forward, and, you know, it's of our opinion that you are entitled to operate in that manner and not outside that manner. So I think that's kind of where we're at right now, and I just wanted to make sure you guys were clear, the board is clear on those points. So we have new things to add, add from there, and then we'll go back to the board and ask additional questions.
Okay, as this case sits right now, the building inspector cited this property for two violations of the conditions of the variance. One, that the premises not be used as a base of operations, and two, that outside storage be limited to two and one-half times the area of cement brick building, provided that all storage is behind the building and not visible from Wyndham Street. We believe we're in full compliance with both conditions.
Okay. And that's all you have to present at this time?
That's it, except to emphasize that those two conditions are the ones we have before the board to deal with.
Okay.
That's what the building inspector cited in his letter.
All right, well, we're going to start over there with you, Bob.
This is for Mr. Maloney. Mr. Maloney, do you still stand by what you wrote?
Well, there was issues where the outdoor storage was. So it's back behind the barn, it's two and a half times the area of the barn. Another one of the issues, again, whether it's cited or not, we were in violation of the 75 variance, we're traveling across 41. So I think if they comply with the 75 variance on their property, 55 Wyndham Street, then we're all set.
So you think they do comply?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right now.
Is there no questions, Bob?
No.
Thank you. Becky?
I think that there was a mention of a conservation commission meeting through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you expand on that a little bit, because I believe that's still upcoming, correct?
Yeah, the ConCon was out to visit the site, I think about a week and a half ago.
October 8th.
Yeah, and the site has been mapped by Hancock Survey, and they're in the process of preparing a detailed wetland map, wetland plan, so the conservation commission can then act upon the area as mapped and issue whatever orders of condition it feels necessary to bring the property into compliance with the Wetland Protection Act. We have no objection to doing whatever they require.
So you're in communication with them?
Constantly, yes.
Okay, so we'll let them take care of that. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Becky. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So are you okay with the four points that were mentioned by the chairman in the 1975 variance?
That's the law of the case. Until the appeals court, you know, the rules itself, or a higher court does, that's the law of the case. We've got four conditions, and those four conditions apply to this property in perpetuity until they don't.
Correct.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff, and Ken?
Yeah, so was anything done about the work that has been doing, has been done over there with the noise and the, like, changing of shovels or whatever you're doing with the heavy equipment, and the banging on the ledge and all that, that the gentleman, a couple of neighbors had mentioned that it was very loud?
Which you were saying.
And I was wondering if anything had been done about that, the noises and the work and the driving with the big trucks?
I've talked to each one of the tenants, and they've been instructed not to idle their trucks more than five minutes. There's only one company out there right now that has a big truck, well, what you consider a big truck, from TNT Excavating, and he's said he will not run it more than five minutes. As for the transferring of equipment, I spoke to him about that, and he will do his best not to make noise, but the variance states I'm allowed to run a business from 7:00 to 5:00. There's going to be noise, I mean, it is what it is.
Well, it says you can load and unload materials.
Right. I spoke to him about that. He's going to do all his loading, unloading for the next day in the afternoon. If he has to move equipment, he'll be in the afternoon hours, between 12:00 and 5:00. He's going to plan his day accordingly to his next day. He's not going to, like, come in at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, load his equipment, load materials, whatever. He's going to have everything prepared.
And this is a shift in what he's been doing prior?
Excuse me?
And this is a shift in how he's been operating prior to this?
Right.
Because normally, it was going on in the morning?
Well, honestly, I mean, his hours are from, like, 8:30 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon. My variance states I'm allowed to use the property from 7:00 to 5:00.
Sure, no, understood.
So it is what it is. I mean, there's going to be some kind of noise. I mean, honestly, I spoke to him the other day, he's been there three times in the last two weeks, so where's the noise, you know?
Well, you'll have to ask your neighbors that one. We're not there, are we?
Well, I mean, I can sit here and tell you, there's 300 cars that go up and down my street every hour on the hour. It's Wyndham Street. There's tractor trailers, there's ambulances, there's trucks. It is what it is. I mean, that one company that runs out of there isn't making the noise. Yeah, he may dump a load of gravel or dump some stone, but I'm entitled to do that on that property, according to this variance.
Ken, does that answer your question?
Yes. I mean, I like--
We're not doing it on purpose.
No, I didn't.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I didn't think you were. I think everyone's trying to do as best they can here.
Right, I mean--
Yeah, I was just wondering--
It is a quiet neighborhood. I don't know what you guys stipulate a quiet neighborhood is, but when you hear airplanes and helicopters going over from Beverly Airport--
Yeah, I think it's a little more than--
3,000 pounds up and down that street a day, there's going to be noise. And that's just not from one company going in and out of there, I'm sorry.
Did you get to settle anything with the neighbor that was here a couple times? I don't know if he's here now.
No, I haven't spoken--
Yes, he is. He is here. Okay. All right, no more questions.
Thank you, Ken. Corinne?
I just have one question. Based on your discussion with the representative from the Conservation Commission, do they indicate whether by keeping, it looks as if that you might be infringing on the buffer zone, if they increase the buffer zone, is that going to decrease the amount of storage you have behind your building?
The buffer zone is what it is. They can't increase it. It's being mapped out. If there's wetland in the area, it's a certain distance from the edge of the wetland, and--
No, but they say, they say in the letter we have here that you could be, your, I don't know whether they mean that your storage or your activities are in that buffer zone.
They could be.
So if you comply with their orders of condition--
Yes.
--and you either move things away or don't actively enter that buffer zone, is that going to decrease any of your activity space?
I think it'd be speculative to even answer that question. What I do believe is going to happen is that the activity that's taking place is not the kind that will be harmful to a wetland. So albeit that it may be in the buffer zone, the Conservation Commission will issue orders of condition to permit the activity to continue.
Okay.
That's what I expect to happen.
Okay. That's it.
Thanks. I don't believe I have any additional questions. I think, and I'll remind the board, we're here to whether or not to uphold the appeal or to not uphold the appeal of the building inspector's decision, which at the time was violating the four conditions that have been highlighted, so. I will go out to the public, I'm seeking only new comments, if any, and if you could, just please come on up, identify yourself, and speak.
Kevin James, I reside at 39 Wyndham Street. I've been to three or four hearings. I do understand your mandate that you only want to hear new information, but in reference to specifically what was just said about not being a base of operation, and I'd like the board's permission just to inquire of Mr. Maloney, and if I could, with the board's consent, I'd like to ask Mr. Maloney about a video that I had sent him on 10/8, October 8th, just recently. Mr. Maloney, do you have a recollection of receiving a video?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell me the video that I sent you?
Yes, right.
Can you tell me what it depicted?
I mean, it depicted the activity that's been in question here. So again, we gave everything to our town council, your complaints, the 75 variance, everything that's transpired at these hearings, and we have a court case, an appeals case from 2010, so--
Yeah, but in reference to, it depicts everything that we've been talking about. Can you tell me, the board, exactly what the video that I sent you on 10/8 depicts?
No.
Okay, if, were to jog your recollection, if I sent you a video wherein a truck was using 41, TNT was using 41 as a driveway, does that refresh your recollection?
Yes, and--
Okay.
But as I stated earlier, that's part of the problem here, is 55 needs to use 55's property for its business, and, you know, I made that clear, I made that clear to 41 also.
And you referenced that just in your statement to the board today, that that's one of the conditions, is that 55 stays at 55 and not go through 41.
Yeah, Mr. James, and I think that's something that the board's very aware of, and we're making the applicant aware of, that 41 Wyndham Street is not to be used as an entrance or exit to 55 Wyndham Street. And if they do that, that is a violation of the variance that's on record.
And they have done that on 10/8, and I have video that I sent to my building inspector that my taxes pay money for, and it's irrefutable evidence. You have a large truck at about 10:00 p.m., 10:30. The reason why we get these videos is because it's so audible at every corner of my home that all you have to do is go out, it's like someone pounding on your door.
Yeah, and this was at what time of day?
The video, I'm pretty sure it was at about 10, between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. on a weekday.
So during the hours of operation, but not the correct entrance to that property?
And also, you could hear the loading of equipment going on to a metal bed truck.
Yeah.
And then as the truck is leaving, and this is a video that Mr. Maloney has, the truck is leaving, the equipment's falling within the truck as it's accelerating from 41 after leaving 55.
Well, again, I think, Mr. James, you can understand, we can only act on what's in the variance, and unfortunately, noise isn't in there. Now, I would say to you that, you know, you're well within your right to continue this, but I don't think it's something the zoning board unfortunately can do anything about the noise part of it.
I understand, but it's beyond noise.
Yeah.
The variance of 1973, which has been repeatedly violated.
Yeah.
And mind you, I went down to town hall, I reviewed the file for the property that I now reside in, and Ms. Mosier, who used to live there, who used to deal with Mr. Bryson 20 years ago, I see typed letters of her pleading for the board to do something about the disruption caused by 41 and 55. And then I'm coming here, being the second owner of the home, with the same complaints.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I think 1986, he was dealing with Mr. Bryson. In reference to base of operation, it continues to be a base of operation. They merely took it from where it wasn't supposed to be, and they stuck it to where the variance told it to be.
Well, I think we can all agree, at least in this board member's opinion, that the spirit of the decision has been lost a little bit. I think Mr. Spears is here trying to rectify that with his tenants. Now, again, just not to bog down this meeting all night--
Yep.
--I can't do anything except advise you to stay with it, continue to, you know, ask for enforcement, either if they're outside the hours of operation. And again, I know our building inspector can't be out there monitoring whether vehicles are coming in and out of 41 Wyndham Street, but I have to believe that Mr. Spears understands that that cannot go on any longer, and I'm hoping that helps to alleviate the problem. It's not going to get rid of the noise.
I understand it's not a noise, and I respect this board's efforts, since we filed this enforcement petition in June, okay, but every time it was coming and going on for meetings, whether it was here or at the middle school, you would say that there'd be total compliance. There's not.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm giving you evidence, just in October, just on video--
Yeah.
--that's irrefutable evidence that they continue. So I give very little merit, no merit, to Mr. Spears' representation, that nothing goes on. It's his position, it's like, look, there's going to be some noise. You know what? Noise isn't the issue. They're raising the issue of noise because they know they can prevail on it. It's a base of operation, and it's a construction site, and that's what's referenced in Mr. Maloney's letter regarding my, in response to my request for enforcement, that it's a construction site, that's outside of the areas, and you're doing business here. Even Mr. Spears, when he references, yeah, they come and go, they drop gravel off, they leave, they change the shovels, and he's going to make the best effort he can to not make noise. He's doing business here. The variance, the disparity variance, and the express language of the variance is intermittent storage. How is coming and picking up gravel to and from several times a day, intermittent storage? You know what intermittent storage is? You have a couple of cars that you refurbish, and you rent from Mr. Spears, and you go in there once in a while, and you pull them out, and you take them out, and you do something. It's not that you go there every single day. That is the term intermittent, and that is expressed in the variance. And I would ask this board, we are left with no options. My neighbors have been here, not just my wife and I, but both of our neighbors, we're coming to meetings every time, and we're not getting anywhere.
No, I understand, and I don't, I just want to understand, I think that that has not fallen on deaf ears on this board. Unfortunately, though, we're being advised by town council, and again, the noise, and as a base of operations is defined, we really can't do much as a zoning board, except ask for compliance. If they continue to violate that 1975 variance, then there'll be another order from the building inspector, and if you want to pursue other things, I can't advise you on what to do, but again, this board is trying to work within the framework of that decision.
And I think, given, and I'm not going to keep going back and forth with your chairman, and again, I respect the board's effort, but I think the evidence has been shown that this is a base of operation, it is not intermittent storage. And I think that the board should uphold Mr. Maloney's decision. There is nothing more that we can do. We, as neighbors and as good citizens, have taken the route that we're encouraged to take. We went civil, did the right thing, we contacted the police, we contacted the building inspector, we contacted our town officials, who are duty-bound to help us, and we presented evidence thereof. And I would urge you, and I know what position or the direction that this board is probably going, but I would urge you to reconsider the evidence before you. If it is upheld, it is of no detriment to Mr. Spears, provided he complied.
Right.
So let him go, and you're on, this is back-to-back, this is repetitive violation, not just from me, but from other neighbors, from other building inspectors, from decades earlier in time. And it's got to stop, and if it doesn't, no, it's got to stop, and we're going to rest at that point.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do we have any other comments on 55 Wyndham Street? Yeah, up in the back. Wait there, yep. If we could, just try to flow around.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Rizzo. I live at 37 Wyndham Street. I've been there for 28 years. I would just like to offer the thought that when the variance was proposed in, was it 1974, and they used the term "base of operation," cell phones were not in existence at the time. Today, you do not need to have a house or a landline to run an operation. There is so much traffic and business that comes and goes from 55, I don't know how they could even have an office somewhere else. So my thought is, can you define what base of operation is in this day and age as compared to when they wrote that variance, where people use their cell phones today to conduct all kinds of business? They can make photocopies, they can scan things, and they can send all kinds of communications so that people don't need to leave. They can stay where they are and perform all the duties that are needed in what--
Yeah, I don't disagree with your statement.
--what used to be, you know, something that you had to do in a land, with a landline in a building. So I don't think that what was written as a variance then applies today, so.
Thank you. Mr. Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, town meeting number precinct one. It bothers me that the variance that was issued for a reason in 1975, that particular variance for a reason, that reason doesn't exist anymore. It should have had a sunset clause or a life that when the operation that the variance was issued for, or conditions changed, the variance would cease to exist. And a new owner, because he might need the variance or might not, if he needed the variance, he would have to make, or the person would have to make their case to get a new variance, not piggybacking on a prior one that should have expired or ceased to exist. Does it make any sense?
I agree, it's just unfortunate, but a variance is with the life of the property, and that's why this board takes issuing them very seriously.
Is there any way we, the town, can write that into a variance?
That would have to come from town meeting.
Okay.
So--
Sounds good.
That's actually mass general law.
That's actually state law.
Yeah, it's mass general law.
Nothing is permanent. Everything can change.
That's right.
My life are a law.
Well, and I think that's what we're seeing here. Things have changed quite a bit from 1975 with regards to this, so.
I certainly would like to see a change. And I'm only one person, and I don't live there.
Right.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this property would be grandfathered anyway, even if the law was changed.
That's right. You can't take away a variance that has prior to exist.
Greg Drewin, I live at 36 Wyndham Street. I think just base of operations, this has been, my father-in-law lived at 41 Wyndham Street, so he's dealt with this, and he'd complain, and things would quiet down.
Could you speak into the mic just a little better?
Okay. Greg Drewin, 36 Wyndham Street. My father-in-law's lived across from them. He's since passed away, but he would always complain, and things would quiet down, like we've lost the logging operation. But we're sure that the logging operation or something else has got to come back, and I think that base of operations is when the logging operation would park several vehicles overnight, and then all their employees would come the next day and start their day there, get in the trucks, go out, and then come back, park the trucks, and take their cars home. That's what I think is a base of operation. And I believe that one time they had a landscaping business going out of there, and there was a complaint, and so they stopped that. And I just, I'm just worried that this is what I think is base of operations. So if he lets somebody else come back in, and they're parking their vehicles overnight so they can just come back the next day and start again, that's what I'm worried about.
I understand.
So that's base of operations. That's what I believe in, so I'm just, so when this is all over and the logging company comes back again, and they're parking their vehicles there, starting and ending their day there, can we decide that that is base of operations and that should be, that's breaking the agreement? I'm just looking ahead, because this is going to happen. So it's not really a rhetorical question. I mean, can, is that, can that be considered base of operation if they start and end their day there?
Well, unfortunately, the base of operation definition is widely interpreted--
Right, but--
--and all we can go on is what town council has advised us.
But when they had the landscaping business there, and they stopped doing that, that was an interpretation then, and I believe the interpretation was because they were starting and ending their day there.
Alls I can advise you is to just stay on top of this situation.
Right.
This board's here to try to--
I got it.
--interpret a decision that was made, you know, 45 years ago, 50 years ago.
Right, I got it.
And I think we're trying to hear every side of this and see if we can't come to a resolution that hopefully works for the neighborhood and the owner of this particular property.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment?
Okay, hearing none. We'll come back to the board, and remember, our board members were whether or not to uphold the building inspector's decision or not, so that's where we're at, and your deliberations, Bob.
Well, it seemed to me that Mr. Maloney, at least what I heard, was the situation has been rectified as far as he's concerned. Is that, yes, sir?
I don't agree with you as a base of operation, and if you take this decision as I just earlier, as I understand it, you're telling them to shut down the operation because you think it's a base of operation. I guess I did.
But I said, my letter, unfortunately, you are clearly not-
Agree.
... the other one, the council is fine with it, because you don't want it to be out.
One of the things I cited in my letter our council has said is moot, but as far as appealing, one of my, one of my conditions I was correct on, so you could uphold that condition. The other one is a moot point that our council has said between the variance, the 2010 appeals court decision, that we don't control the type of business there as long as they comply with the hours in the storage area.
I will vote to uphold the, the building inspector's decision.
Thank you, Bob. Becky.
I think that we're dealing with going back to the 1975 four conditions, and that the building inspector's letter indicates they have to comply with those four conditions. So, and it appears the applicant is willing to comply with those four conditions, so I would uphold the building inspector in that we would be, that the applicant complies with those four conditions.
Very good. Thank you, Becky. And Ken.
Thank you. I will uphold the building inspector's decision, but I do have a point to make, too.
Sure.
Out of these four articles, the second one is the one, obviously, base of operation. Then Article Four says, "There shall be no work or loading carried on between certain hours." So, you know what I'm saying? It's almost like they're saying, "Don't do any work, but make sure you only do the work between these hours." So that's what I'm saying about base of operation. It's just an interpretation, as far as I'm concerned, so, and as long as they're okay with these four conditions, I'll stick with that.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. And Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will uphold the decision of the building inspector, although it appears that the applicants are attempting to comply with the four things, so that's my vote.
Thank you, Jeff. And Ken.
I would strongly err on the side of the neighbors, and I would want to see the non-compliance upheld.
Thank you, Jeff. And Corinne.
I would also uphold the building inspector's decision.
Thank you, Corinne. And I, too, you know, when, when the building inspector is forced into these situations, because that's how I look at it, he's out to enforce what's already on the books. He, like us, have to interpret a decision from 1975. I don't see any error on his part. At the time when he inspected 55 Oneham Street and wrote the letter, that was the case. I am grateful the applicant is trying to comply. I think you've heard a lot from your neighbors, and particularly pointed out tonight that, you know, you still have trucks going up and down or entering your property from 41. I hope you can find a way to make that cease and desist immediately. There shouldn't be any discussion on this. Otherwise, we're gonna be right back here, is my feeling, and I think we all have a better use of our time than to debate this. So I don't see Rich erred in any way, and therefore I-
Could I clarify?
Well, hold on. I am going to move to uphold his decision. And yes, Becky, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So the letter, his letter as it state, I think it needs the word "not" in that first sentence.
The letter from Rich?
Number two of Rich's letter says that the premises be used as a base for business operations, but number two in, from the, Dave DeLuca, from the lawyer, says that the premises not be used as a base for business operations. So just to make sure that we have the right, we're upholding the right-
Yeah, I think that's, Rich, I'm, I'm correct. It's not to be used as a base of operation.
Correct.
Correct.
It's so that there's a typo, so we just want to clarify that.
And we have affidavits, again, I don't think this helps with the neighbors, but we have affidavits from these three tenants of Mr. Spears that state they are not using this as a base of operation, although, as neighbors have pointed out, you know, base of operations is not what it once was in 1975, and I think you also heard me say on multiple occasions throughout this process that the spirit of this variance is not what I think the intention of the 1975 zoning board was. However, none of us were on that board, and all's we have to reference is what's on paper. So again, I don't see Mr. Maloney erroring here. The board has voted to uphold his decision, and at this point, what would you like to do? You can withdraw your appeal?
I'm confused.
Okay.
My plan was to evade the violation for 30 days.
And you came and appealed that violation, so-
But they evaded the violation, and town council has said this is not base of operation, so that violation shouldn't be-
But you're appealing that this didn't occur, and what we're sitting here saying is, is saying is that when Mr. Maloney inspected this property, that was the case. So there's nothing that Mr. Maloney erred on in issuing that letter.
With all due respect, I think he made a mistake when he determined that it was a base of operation.
Well, you just heard the will of this board, and this was, the board's upholding his decision.
Well, I think you need to-
Eh, okay.
I think-
But, but we're hoping to make progress here where-
All right. The location of the outdoor storage was a violation. My interpretation of the variance on the base of operations was wrong and corrected by town council. So I think you need to word your, that you're upholding the location of the outdoor storage in the building inspector's decision.
Yes, and then as far as base of operations, we're conceding, if you will, that it's-
Was not in violation.
It's not, you're not in violation of that piece of it.
That's, I just wanted, I wasn't clear.
Okay, so are we, are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can either choose, I believe, to withdraw your appeal, because the board has voted to uphold his decision with the caveat that there's been a change in the second piece of his letter as far as regarding base of operations.
I think the board is gonna do, the board has decided to vote the way it's gonna vote, and I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And I think if Mr. Spears, if he's not satisfied, he's got 30 days to bring an action with his-
That is fair.
I don't think that's gonna happen, which I think is, in fact, withdrawal.
Okay. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved to allow the applicant to withdraw.
No.
No, no.
No, to uphold-
To uphold the building inspector.
Oh, I thought he asked for a withdrawal.
To uphold one piece and not the other.
And we got, do we have that right, Rich? I just want to make sure, yeah.
All right, I move that the, that we vote to uphold the building inspector's, inspector's decision based on, what do we call it?
The four conditions of the 1975.
Variance docket.
Well, it wasn't four conditions, it was just one, he finally said.
The storage and location.
The storage condition.
Yes.
The location of the outdoor storage was-
All right, whatever he said. And regarding the variance docket, number zero dash one zero two five.
And we're not upholding the violation of base of operation.
I didn't mention that, so I guess we're not.
Right. I've got a motion. Could I get a second?
No second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, folks, just give us a minute, we'll wipe down microphones, and we'll get on to the next case.
So we go from 40 degrees in here to like 100 degrees.
Yeah, it's, I thought it was just me.
Really hot in here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Phew.
Trying to sweat us out.
Last time we were here was 40 degrees.
All right.
Whoever voted or heard these cases originally voted.
No one voted.
It doesn't matter. He wasn't here.
I watched the-
Did he, did he review?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Maybe that's your fault. I don't think it's, I don't think it's any of this. Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next case is Carlos Pinto Jr., docket 20 dash 4875, requesting a variance, special permit, and a finding to convert an existing structure to a two-family, erect, erect a second floor. The existing is six foot eight inches from the property line. New addition will be the same in accordance with 30.2.4C and 30.2.4A, B, and D, and 3.11.1 A and B of the Denver zoning bylaws at 73 Poplar Street. This is zoned R1.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Pinto, you were last here September 14th, and I reviewed the minutes. I know we were looking for a more detailed parking plan. Thank you, we did receive an updated drawing October 13th. Is, can you please add to, besides the updated drawing, anything, any other changes?
Probably can see the proposal and the revised over there, so we actually did everything change from a three-bedroom to a two-bedroom unit.
Okay.
The addition doesn't need a finding anymore, it's only increasing about five, six feet to the side to where the deck was, and on the first floor. So-
I'm sorry, did you say you're no longer seeking the finding, just variance and special permit?
The finding is just for the, raising the second floor.
Okay.
Because of the, for the addition as well. The addition is now compliant with the zoning setback. So we downsized everything on three-bedroom to two-bedroom units. We changed the parking to, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. I heard you guys had some, last time, you guys talking about the parking being all, you know, hard to move around, so we changed all the parking to, three parking to the back, one to the side, leaving plenty of space for, so they can do a, just back up and go to the street facing front. Right now, if you look over there, they have about 35 feet of space for three parking, so leave plenty of space on the side so the car can just make the turn without, you know, catching any other car, and just move along to the street.
I'm sorry, did you say 35 feet?
It's about 35 feet. It was about 34 dot six on the back for three parking, and then another parking is on the side.
Okay. Okay, is that about it?
That's all the changes.
Okay, thank you. Corinne, we'll start down there with you.
I, I like these plans a lot better, especially the, the parking situation. Looks like you're taking down the garage, which really opens up the space along the side of the house. You're putting three of the parking spaces in the back. It just looks, as far as the parking situation, it's, it's a much better situation. So I thank you for doing that, and I don't have any questions.
No questions. Ken, questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Jeff?
I have no questions.
And Ken?
No questions, thank you.
Becky?
No questions.
Bob?
No questions.
So I have one. So does the square footage of the house, you're saying, within the existing footprint?
The square footage is increasing around 80 square feet.
So, I'm sorry, say it again?
About around 80 square feet, the square footage.
It'll increase by 80 square feet?
Yeah.
Eighty, okay.
Yeah, just, just on the addition, if you see where the deck was, so you're just moving a little bit to the deck, so the deck's gonna come out, and the addition's gonna be part of that.
You're taking out the deck and you're adding house there?
That's right.
Very good. Okay, any other questions from the board? Go out to the audience, anybody here on, is it 73?
Yeah.
73 Poplar Street. Hearing none, we'll come back to the board. Deliberations, Corinne.
I will vote for this.
Thank you, Corinne. Ken?
I would vote for this, too.
Jeff?
I will vote for this.
Ken?
I'll vote for this. Good changes to the plans, by the way.
Becky?
I would vote for this. Thank you for looking at the parking.
Bob?
Because he changed the parking, I will vote for this. I wouldn't have left it the way it was.
I know.
And I, too, like the changes. I think this, it's still a lot of house for a little lot, but I understand that it is allowed, and I think you've done a better job to package it. So we need, folks, a variance and special permit.
And a finding, too, though.
I think we don't need the fi, let me go out to the building inspector. Don't believe we need the finding, Rich?
I've got it all listed on there for you.
Sorry?
I have it all listed for you. You do need a finding.
We do need the finding. Okay, I didn't hear that right.
Mr. Chairman-
Are you right, Bob? Yes, the trifecta, please.
I move that we grant the special permit to convert the single-family home into a two-family in accordance with section 30.2.4A, B, and D of the Denver zoning bylaws for the plan submitted. The municipal water and sewer shall not be overloaded. The public street shall not be overloaded by this two-family. The value of other buildings and properties shall not be depreciated by this two-family. The specific site's appropriate location for a two-family. The two-family will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be undue nuisance to vehicles or pedestrians, and adequate and proper facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the two-family. Proposed two-family will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw.
I've got a motion for a special permit. Can I get a second?
Second.
I've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Variance?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance from section 30.2.4C to add to the structure of the special permit conversion for the plan submitted. The hardship's the size and shape of the lot and the location of the existing house on the lot.
Second.
Can you cite the revised plans?
Revised.
Revised plan dated October 13th.
Okay.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jerry?
Mr. Chairman-
Two-part finding.
I move that we grant the finding in accordance with section 3.11.1A and B, who had a second floor, the right side in front, and non-conforming. The proposed addition will maintain the same setback as the plan submitted. We find that the proposed addition is shown on the plans increases the nonconformity.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second part.
The proposed addition is shown on the plan is not substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
See you, Rich.
It's hot up here.
I'm glad I went to the car to get it.
Kathleen, anyway, they can turn the air conditioner.
I think Rich went to look and see.
Turn the heat off.
Yeah. We open a window.
We're elevated, that's perfect.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our third continued case is Beaufort Ambulance Service, docket twenty dash four eight seven eight, requesting a variance to allow bunking on the second floor in accordance with section six, table one, of the Denver zoning bylaws at One Cheever Street. This is Zone Commercial One.
Good evening. If you could, right into the mic and just your name again, please.
John Morris, owner of Beaufort Ambulance.
I think we asked for an updated parking plan. We were on receipt of that. You want to expand any further than that?
Just from touching on the last meeting, the concern was around the parking. We're seeking bunking permission, which is basically fancy word for allowing my ambulance crews to sleep in the building overnight. Right now, we're pulling the crew out of there and stationed at one of our stations over the shore. So the parking plan as submitted shows that we can fit six vehicles in the parking lot to the right of the building. We can fit five vehicles on the inside of the building. And on a daily basis, we have three company vehicles staffed out of this building, and we have four employee vehicles.
Okay, so those four employee vehicles, they park on the outside?
Correct, in the parking lot to the right.
And that leaves you two open spots.
Correct.
Okay. And they're not parking on the street?
Sometimes they do.
Okay.
Our policy is if they park in the parking lot to the right.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you. Bob, we'll start down there with you.
I don't have any questions. He did what we asked him to do.
Very good, thank you. Becky?
My only question is, because this is a variance through the building inspector, just through you, Mr. Chair, how do we clarify this, so that this isn't like a forever?
Yeah, I think we discondition it with this property. I think we can do that.
In this case, the bunking will be for an ambulance service.
Ambulance service.
On-site, on-site ambulance service.
Okay.
And this tenant leaves that building, then that fails to-
It's still there, as long as it's an ambulance service.
Right.
But that's fine.
Right?
Which is fine. I mean, if we're gonna okay it for one, we can okay it for-
We're not just generally allowing-
No, just ambulance. You'll take that as a condition, correct?
That's why I sent them here, and I just didn't want this to gain some kind of non-conforming residential status. The board had looked at this property before, and it was issued a variance for apartment up there, when I think Walter Collectors was gonna buy the property. So I just thought it would be the proper thing to do, and when we checked the records, that's what Lyons had done at the old fire, main firehouse, so.
Okay.
So we'll condition this to ambulance business.
Ambulance only.
You're good?
Yes, thank you.
Ken?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Ken?
Do you know the dimensions of the parking spaces?
I do not know off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay, but they've walked off or measured out, so a car, a normal-sized car can fit?
Correct, yes. I've seen six, six personal vehicles parked in that parking lot.
Okay. No other questions?
Thanks, Ken. And Corinne?
I have no questions, thank you.
My questions were answered. You already said you'd take this as a condition, that it would be an ambulance business only. Out to the audience, anybody here on One Cheever Street? Come on up.
Again, Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Considering the service of this business office, the town, the safety factor, I certainly, I'm not a member of the board, but I certainly would be voting for it.
I agree, thank you. Anyone else here on One Cheever Street? Hearing none, we'll, we'll come back to the board. I think I sat down there with you, Bob.
I'll vote for this.
Thank you. Becky?
I'll vote for this.
Ken?
I'll vote for this.
And Jeff?
I will vote for this.
And Ken?
I would vote for this, too.
And Corinne?
I will vote for this.
And I, too, will vote for this with the condition that it's being granted for an ambulance service slash business only. So if I could get a motion, please.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the variance from section six, table one, of the Denver zoning bylaws, to allow bunking for an ambulance service of employees of an ambulance service on the second floor per the plan submitted. The hardship's size and shape of the lot, location of the structure of the lot.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I didn't hear the ambulance part.
He said it.
Did he?
You got the ambulance part of that, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Wasn't paying attention.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Hope they hope so. Attorney McKen, you're gonna speak on your continued first, yes? Okay. Okay, Mr. Clerk, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final continued case is JHR Development LLC, docket twenty dash four eight eight three, requesting a variance to allow a portion of the property to be used for multi-family residential purposes, and a finding to allow the alteration of an existing non-conforming parking setback and landscaping setback to decrease the non-conformity by increasing the parking setback and the landscaping buffer over existing conditions in accordance with table three, section three, of the Denver zoning bylaws at fifty-one Needham Road. This is Zone C three.
My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. At your last meeting, you did make a full presentation, and at the end of that meeting, you had requested that we seek the planning board's input. We have made that request. We have provided everything to the planning board. As of last week, I was told by planning staff that the planning board did not wish to hear this casing formally. I had a conversation with planning staff and indicated that it was the desire of this board that you get input from the planning board. As of this time, we have, I have requested to be placed on the planning board's meeting of October twenty-seventh. I have not received a response. I don't know if that is going to be on their agenda. I have provided the planning board with everything that you have, all of the boards that were shown to you, and we're happy to, to meet with the planning board to receive that input, but I don't know that that is going to happen. So I have requested from you a continuance until your next meeting, so hopefully we can accomplish that with the planning board, or perhaps planning staff is going to be giving you input.
And that is November second, correct?
We have requested a continuance until November second.
And that is-
We, as the applicant, doesn't want to be held up, held up too much more than that if we can't get that input, but hopefully we will have that for you by November second.
Just to note, that would be at Holden Richmond, not here.
Are you going to be able to hear me at Holden Richmond? But maybe it'll be cool. So it's kind of a balance, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so could I get a motion to continue?
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So there's something called through you to the building inspector, a technical review committee, and maybe Mrs. McCann can answer this. Exactly how does that work, and was that started for this, or how do you do that? Maybe you can explain.
That may be what the planning staff is looking at, and we have indicated that that would be fine with us also.
A technical review?
A technical review committee meeting. We had a review, which was a technical committee review, in July. It was not as detailed, although the plans were presented the same as the plans that we presented to you. But there was not a great deal of input, as Mr. Maloney indicated at the last hearing during that review meeting. That may be what the planning staff is going to propose. How it started is what I've already done, which-
Okay.
Given them everything that-
It just seems a little convoluted to me, and I'm trying to understand the process, and maybe, John, if you could ask Rich to clarify, how does that process happen?
It all starts upstairs in the planning department, so.
So if, if an applicant has a project and they want a technical review before they bring it to the boards, they request that, and then it's granted, or?
Well, typically, there was a liaison up in the planning department, and you would request a TRC, and we'd pull something together. Somebody would send out an email to everybody, and we'd get all the grant of time.
So essentially, is that what's happening now with this?
I haven't seen any requests for a TRC yet, so.
I'm sorry?
I have not seen any requests for a TRC on that property yet.
Okay.
And that's nothing, that's nothing the zoning board can request. Do I have that correct? That has to come from the planning board.
It's to come from the applicant.
Staff. It's a staff thing. Yeah.
Did the planning board chairman get in touch with you at all?
No.
I have heard nothing. Interesting.
I can read you the correspondence that I received. In consult, this was from the town planner, Josh Morris. "In consultation with the planning board chair, the proposed project at fifty-one Needham Road, formerly Hollywood Hits, will not be discussed at the planning board meeting next week." That was, that was the first request that I had made after the last meeting. "It was determined that the appropriate course of action for this matter is for town staff to review this project in a technical review committee slash town staff meeting. If you could please send us the plans and the materials regarding the proposed project electronically, that would be helpful." I have done that.
So it sounds like-
But I've also indicated that this board asked for planning board input, but it may be that what you will receive is planning staff input, which may be sufficient.
I think we're okay with either.
Right.
We just want some input.
Right, and, and I've given them everything, and I'm, hopefully, there will be that review. And sometimes those technical staff review are done as a technical review committee meeting where the applicant attends, and sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's an internal review that the applicant does not attend, and we get input back after that's, that review is completed. I'm not sure. I haven't received information back as to whether we will be going to a technical review, which is fine, we're perfectly happy to do that, or whether it'll be an internal review, but all the information has been given.
Mr. Chairman, I just feel that there are many facets of this project, and some which are beyond our expertise, and technically, things that we wouldn't deal with, or normally deal with, so-
I agree.
I, I think that it's, we're being asked to make a decision on something that we need more information on.
I agree.
I agree, too.
I think that's what the nature of the continuance was after your initial presentation. I know you want to move forward, and my feeling is that on November second, if we don't have that input, I don't see how we can move forward.
I didn't want to just say, yes, we're continuing it. I want it to be a conversation of what we need in order to move forward.
And, and this is helpful to me.
I think another piece of that is where I think Corinne pointed out, we're also-
We're waiting for that environmental study report, which we haven't received yet to review.
That's right.
So those things are out there, and again, I don't see how this board can move forward November second without that.
Right.
Input.
What I wanted to clarify is that if we do not meet with the planning board, planning staff input is sufficient, is what you're looking for, and that, if that was-
I mean, I'm one voice, but in my opinion, yes.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful, and hopefully we will have that in time for the next meeting, and I hear you. If we don't, if we're missing some things, then I, then I understand, but at this point, I think I would like, as I've indicated, request a continuance to November second.
For November second, all right. Could I get a motion?
Yeah, I mean, the town has a planning department. We want them to participate.
Want them to plan.
I, I would make a motion to continue to November second.
I have a motion. Can I have a second? I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Next case, Mr. Chairman, top of the agenda, please. Don't need to clean.
My next case is Wayne and Amanda Moda, docket twenty dash four eight eight five, requesting a variance from side setbacks, gross square footage, and a finding to demolish and rebuild an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot in accordance with section three point seventeen and table two of the Denver zoning bylaws at fifteen Tibbetts Avenue. This is Zoned R two.
Attorney McCann, if you could just bring that microphone as close as possible to you, because we can't really hear up here.
How about that? Is that better?
Little bit.
Does it tip up?
Like you're singing on stage.
How's that?
Really belt it in there.
All righty. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here tonight on behalf of Wayne and Amanda Moda. Wayne and Amanda are here this evening. Also with me tonight is Peter Rogren, the project engineer. And this is regarding the property at fifteen Tibbetts Ave. It's located in the R two zoning district, and we are requesting a finding and a variance as needed in order to reconstruct a single-family home on this property. The Modas purchased the property earlier this year with the intent of occupying this for their own single-family home for their, for their family. The existing building is constructed, or was constructed, as the core in about nineteen ten. Since that time, there's been a number of additions, variations, things put on the property. So what you have now is, I'll describe it as a conglomeration of things that have been done to this building over the years. And as a result, we have an existing non-conforming structure that is as close as six inches to the side lot line of the existing lot. It's also a non-conforming lot in and of itself. The proposal that the Modas have before you tonight is the removal of the existing dwelling and the reconstruction on the site of a new single-family home in its place. That's going to be an attractive addition, a uniform-looking structure. As you can see here, the architectural design is quite attractive, that will meet the needs of the Moda family and will fit well with other homes in the neighborhood. And in the course of designing this house, wherever- And in the course of designing this house, wherever, the Modas could decrease the nonconformity of the existing structure. They have done that through their design. Many of the homes in the neighborhood, if you've driven through there in anticipation of this hearing, have gone through a similar renovation, upgrading, reconstruction over the years. And what's being proposed is a single-family home that will fit well within the existing neighborhood. This subdivision was set out in 1908 with very small lots, with 50 feet of frontage for each of those lots, and the existing lot is no exception. It's a 3,700-square-foot lot in the R2 zoning district, and it's similar to the other lots within the neighborhood. The existing home is 11 feet plus or minus setback from the front lot line. The proposed house will not increase that nonconformity. It will maintain that setback of 11.7 feet. The side setback that I mentioned of the existing house that's six inches off of the side lot line is being increased to four feet off of the side lot line. The other side lot line is being kept at 2.8 feet, and the rear lot line is remaining about the same as at about 52 feet. An important point in the design of the house and compliance with the bylaw, the existing footprint is 1,980 square feet. That's the existing footprint on this lot. The proposed footprint is 1,980 square feet. So the applicant has not increased the footprint size. The square footage has remained the same for the footprint. The footprint is redesigned a little bit, and we've been able to decrease the nonconformity somewhat, but the overall square footage of the footprint has remained the same. The lot coverage is also remaining the same at 32 percent. So again, wherever the applicant could decrease the nonconformity, they have done so, and they have tried to work within the confines of what the existing grandfathering protection is. The, under Section 3.17 of the bylaw, one variance that we are requesting is that the overall square footage of the dwelling is increasing. The footprint is staying the same, but there is a more regular shape to the second floor. So that is resulting in a slight increase in the square footage over the existing structure. And under Section 3.17, we do need a variance for that. The other variance we are seeking, although we are maintaining the 2.8-foot setback from, as you're looking at the house, from the right-hand side, we do have a small bump out for the chimney. That does not have a foundation, but you see that on the plan. There's a bump out for the chimney in this location. So we are seeking a finding under Section 3.17 to demolish and reconstruct a new single-family home on a nonconforming lot, and we are complying with the requirements for such a finding, with the exception, we are increasing the square footage, as I've just indicated, to allow a more regular second floor, but maintaining the same footprint, square footage of the building. And we do have the bump out of about two feet for the chimney. And I will note, the bump out for the chimney, located here, while it's encroaching a little bit closer for a very short amount of space to accommodate the chimney, that side lot line abuts a right-of-way. It is not abutting another single-family home. We have also, in the design, increased significantly the distance between existing buildings. We have more than doubled the distance in between the buildings. So we're requesting the var- we certainly think that the finding requirements, that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, is certainly met. This home has been designed beautifully and will fit in well with the neighborhood. The hardship that we have in dealing with a lot that's 3,700 square feet, when you try to apply dimensional setback requirements that are in place for a 20,000-square-foot lot, it is impossible to meet those and result with some buildable area. So that is certainly the hardship for the variance requested. Before I turn it over to Peter O'Grane to go through any additional parts of the plan, I do want to provide you with letters the applicant has met with their neighbors, and we do have letters of support from the neighbors, immediately abutting on both sides, and the neighbors abutting those neighbors on both sides. So we do have letters of support from 11 Tibbetts, 13 Tibbetts, 14 Tibbetts, 17 Tibbetts, 19 Tibbetts, and 23 Tibbetts. And those letters I will read to you. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my support for our new neighbors, Wayne and Amanda Moda of 15 Tibbetts Avenue, on their plan to build a full-time residence in our neighborhood. The Modas have shared preliminary plans with us, and we feel that the home, with its proposed size and look, would blend nicely with the other homes on Tibbetts. We welcome the addition to our street and look forward to having new neighbors. Thank you for your consideration." And I don't know how I get these to you, Mr. Chairman, so I'll give them to Kathy.
Yes, give them to Kathy. One part of this setup we didn't take into consideration.
That's right. So again, we think that this is a very attractive addition. It will fit well with the neighborhood. It makes the most of the environment of this neighborhood. If you went out to look, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and this design really takes advantage of that and will be just a lovely addition. So I'll turn it over to Peter, who can describe the plans for you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of being able to appear before you. First of all, I have to disclose that Wayne and Amanda Moda are my son-in-law and daughter, and I am representing them as an engineer. They became interested in this house initially because it was on the river, and the river is a great amenity, something that they were interested in having. And they were originally interested in remodeling it. But in discussing with the building inspector, a couple of architects, and a number of builders, it became obvious that being a great amount of the value of the house and having to bring it up to code, looking at the foundation of the house, and a bunch of other aspects, the fact that the first floor is actually in the floodplain, and the building inspector even volunteered that it would be more desirable to tear it down and build something that's built totally up to code and above the floodplain. So that's what we're here to do. I do want to explain that the footprint or the lot coverage of it is exactly the same as the lot coverage prior, but as Nancy described, we've changed the configuration of it to hopefully eliminate some of the nonconformities or alleviate some of the nonconformities. There is an increase in porch area of about 129 square feet, as shown on the plan. That's not considered as part of the lot coverage under the zoning, but I just wanted to point that out to the board. As Nancy mentioned in her presentation, the house that's there now was originally built in the early 1900s. There are actually portions of the house in framing that you can see inside the dwelling and the boiler room and stuff. And it was built with a number of additions that were kind of added and added on in various areas, wood frame, some brick veneer. And it's not architecturally congruous, I don't think, with the neighborhood. What the Modas plan to do is build basically a shingle-style house, which is much more conducive to what the architectural style should, I think, be in that particular neighborhood. And I think that's why they've gained some of the support of the neighbors. So with that presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Attorney McCann, is that the end of your presentation? Very good. We'll start over there with you, Corinne.
I went to the neighborhood to look around, and I agree, the new construction in the neighborhood is beautiful. Your house, the new house, will fit right in. All your neighbors love you, and they're very excited for your project. So my only question is, this house was originally constructed at a time when there could be some historical, I guess, restoration? Are there any issues there with the historical society?
No. We went to the preservation commission, and the preservation commission, with the input of Richard Trask, the town archivist, found that there is nothing historically significant left in the property, and they voted that the demolition could occur.
Okay, all right. Did he provide you written notice of that, or was it just a verbal confirmation?
It was an official meeting, and that was provided to the building inspector.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Ken?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you. So you're gaining some square footage, and I take it that's from elevation?
Build it right. To have the second floor be really a full second floor.
What's the difference in the height of the original house and this new home?
I can't tell you the difference, but I can tell you that the structure as designed conforms to the zoning. I don't know the height of the existing house.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Ken. To the building inspector, Rich, this is, is this Act 2?
Act 2.
What does that spec to the midline of the roof?
30 feet.
30? Thank you. Becky?
My only thought was that the house is coming out closer to the street, but it's not-
No. It's maintaining the front setback is maintaining at-
It's coming across, though, to create the two-car garage.
Oh, yes. But it's not coming any closer to the street.
Right, right. So you're just squaring that off so that, and that makes sense to do that, to put a car there, to put the garage there, so.
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Becky. Bob?
Is this in the floodplain?
Yes, the lean subject to coastal storm flowage here is elevation 10, and we've actually already filed with the conservation commission and have a hearing coming up on Thursday night.
You're going to build it so the water flows? I know some of them have it so-
It has to be built in accordance with the building code. It has to be built with breakaway panels and piers, and that's how it will have to be built.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Is it old house? You want to put up a new house? Good luck.
Thank you, Bob. I have just one. So I understand the garage on the proposed new home, does that change any kind of cutout or anything on the street? Is there an entrance there currently?
Currently, the street doesn't have a curb. It's just a bituminous edge, and then it goes right into the existing driveway. And actually, the existing driveway covers much of the front of the property. I could, I brought a copy of what's been filed with the conservation commission. In the existing condition, this entire area is paved with, and they cots, at least two cots there, maybe even on occasion more. So that's all paved in the proposed condition. This will be paved here, probably a little less than what's there now.
So more or less impervious surface?
There is less total impervious surface in the proposed condition than in the existing. If you, and I shouldn't say if you, because I happen to know that you did view the lot. The lot is virtually covered with pavers now. That will be reduced. And so even though there's the 129 square feet of increase in the porch area, there's a decrease of, I believe it's around 200 square feet. There's a decrease of 234 square feet of patio area, so the net is 105 square feet less imperviousness.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll go up to the audience. Anybody here on 15 Tibbetts Ave? I don't think I see any.
No.
I'll come back to the board. Corinne, deliberations?
I would vote for this.
Thank you, Corinne. Ken?
I went out to the site, too, and I just wanted to make sure that you weren't blocking any neighbors from seeing the river or the ocean over there. And you do not. It seems like they're far away. Actually, they can't even see over the existing house anyways. So there's no issues with this. I think it looks like a beautiful design, and I would vote for this, too.
Thanks, Ken. Jeff?
Yeah, I think it's just going to be a big improvement to the neighborhood from the existing condition. I would vote for this.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you. I think this is going to look great, and FYI, this is my new favorite neighborhood. I'll vote for this.
Especially the yacht sales with the adult coverage. Becky?
I will also vote for this. I think this is at least the third house on that cul-de-sac that we've dealt with with this board, and it's turning into an incredible neighborhood, so, yeah.
Thank you, Becky. And Bob?
I must say, I've been here longer than you, and we've dealt with more than three thousand. And, yeah, watch one more. I'll vote for this.
Thank you, Bob. I, too, I visited, obviously, the site yesterday, although I think the height of this house is a little taller here. Neighbor saw I'll see to be in favor of it. I think it's in very good keeping with what's around it, and it looks like just a real great spot, so could I get a motion, please? And I am in favor of it.
Mr. Chairman, we've got one part finding. I move that we grant the finding in accordance with Section 3.171 and 4 of the zoning bylaws to tear down the existing dwelling and rebuild, as shown on the plans submitted.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the variance?
I move that we grant the variance from Section 3.172 of the zoning bylaw to allow the increase in the gross square footage, as shown on the plans submitted. Move to grant the variance from Section 3.173 of the zoning bylaws to increase the nonconforming right-side setback for the chimney bump out, as shown on the plans submitted. The hardship, due to circumstances, shape of topography, soil conditions, the fact that it is a grandfathered 6,000-square-foot lot in a 20,000-square-foot zone, it would that's the hardship.
Okay. We've increased the square footage of existing building. Okay, I've got a motion. Could I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Keep Dad on the payroll.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we need to go, please. Can we take a break? This is going to be a big-
Five minutes, stand up.
Yeah, we're going to, folks, we're going to take a quick five-minute break.
This one's going to be big.
We'll be back in five minutes. Folks, uh, the, uh, Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals is back in session. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if we could read our last case for the evening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final case is Dillip Realty LLC, docket 20-4886, requesting a use and dimensional variance to redevelop the property into a five-story multifamily building with 208 residential units and five-story accessory parking garage in accordance with section 6.1 in table two of the town of Danvers zoning bylaws at 152 Endicott Street. This is zone C3.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Rob Hewitt. I'm the Vice President of Development for Fairfield Residential. Um, we're, I'm in charge of development in the northeast region. Um, we appreciate the board hearing our request tonight and if it pleases the board, I'll do a brief overview of the proposed development and then turn it over to our project attorney to go through the details of our request. Um, Fairfield Residential, we're an integrated multifamily development, uh, company. I say integrated in that, uh, not only are we a development company, but we also have a construction company that builds our developments and an operating company which leases and manages, uh, our properties as we hold them, um, for the long term. Our regional office is located in Burlington, Massachusetts, and we have many communities either in operation, under construction, or in the planning stages across Massachusetts. Our request tonight here is for the property located at 152 Endicott Street, uh, which is currently the closed Denny's and Days Inn. Um, on this board to my left, uh, is a picture of the existing conditions which shows the two rectangular hotel, former hotel buildings and then the Denny's restaurant with the red roof at the beginning of the, at the entrance to the property. The site is 4.3 acres and borders Highway 128, Endicott Street, the mobile station, um, the Endicott Square Shopping Center and the Waters River, uh, on the plan south. We feel the site is well-located for a multifamily apartment community in that it's located in the town of Danvers. It has great access to retail and it has, uh, in close proximity to transit via Highway However, the site does have challenges due to its unusual shape, soil conditions, access, adjacent uses, some existing utility easements that burden the site and chapter 91 restrictions along the, uh, the Waters River. Over the past year, we've worked with the town of, uh, Danvers Planning Department and other departments, uh, to review the proposed development, react to comments, questions, and concerns, and revise the plan, uh, into what we're presenting tonight. We've, uh, been to technical review committee twice, um, we sat in person and interacted with the department heads, um, and so that, that process, uh, happened over the past year. Uh, the building, uh, that we've designed is intended to revitalize the existing dilapidated property, uh, provide an attractive addition to Endicott Street at the intersection of 128 and Endicott where you enter Danvers from, um, that side of the highway. Um, so the site plan, which is part of your package, is to my right, which shows the rectangular building, uh, with an internal courtyard, uh, connected to a freestanding parking garage on the right-hand side of the plan. Uh, I'll show you a rendering of what we're currently planning, uh, the building will look like from two views. The first will be from Endicott Street with the property on your left and the second will be at the entrance of the property looking toward the main door and leasing center. Consistent with Fairfield Development's practice, we use high-quality materials and design a very attractive, uh, apartment community. Uh, we, we cater to our residents and we try to build to a very high-quality standard. The development includes access through Chalet Court, which is a laid-out but unconstructed town right-of-way, and also a new stormwater management system, uh, to address, to bring the site up to current, uh, regulatory status. Currently, there's no stormwater management system in place. I have the full design team here if there are any questions that they can answer best, uh, including the project architect, the civil engineer, and our traffic engineer. At this time, I'll ask Tim Sullivan of Gulston and Stores to, uh, describe our request in a little more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me.
If you could just pull that mic a little closer up.
Sure, sure.
Up higher.
Up higher. Tim Sullivan, Gulston and Stores.
Thank you.
Uh, here on behalf of the applicant. So, Rob did, uh, a great job giving an overview of the site. So, 152 Endicott Street, proposing 208 residential units and parking. It's a five-story building. So, the site, though, beyond the project, it, it's a unique site. It's bounded by three streets, so it has Endicott Street, um, just to orient people for a moment. So, for the plan, you have Endicott Street as a frontage here. On this side, you have the layout for Route 128, which is also a street for purposes of the bylaw, and you have Chalet Court, which Rob was mentioning. So, just to orient people, you have, uh, sort of a uniquely situated site in that you have three roadways bounding the site. You have the Waters River on the bottom of the site, subject to chapter 91, subject to Conservation Commission. So you have a site that is, a site that's very constrained from a regulatory standpoint, uniquely situated from a right-of-way standpoint. So you, you really don't have much of a developable area. You're in a commercial district where, in a day where you don't have, uh, brick and mortar retail thriving, you have a hotel use and, uh, restaurant use. It's not viable for redevelopment in the current climate. So multifamily use is really sort of the best use of this property. So we, we have, we have, I'll say, three categories of variances to make this project, uh, to, the relief needed for this project. First, we have use. Uh, multifamily use is not allowed in the Commercial 3 District, which is the zoning district where we're in. So we need a use variance for that, as well as for the parking structure, which, as Rob pointed out, is part of the development here and part of the building, but it is a separate use. So we need use, uh, on that and to provide 10% affordable housing as part of the project. So we have use variances. We also have dimensional variances. So as part of the project, um, just to be, I should just note that as part of our application, we submitted a number of materials. Exhibit six of the narrative lists all of the variances and I'm just sort of grouping them for purposes of, of giving an overview. So the dimensional variances are setback. Again, we have three fronts here, um, so we have a 50-foot setback that we need relief from Endicott to provide 40 feet and from the, I'll call the Route 128 right-of-way to provide seven feet. So we need front setback relief. Um, there's also a parking setback, separate from the front setback, that we need relief from, and that cuts the corner of the parking structure. So we're asking for setback relief as well as height relief. The building, as I mentioned, is a five-story 65-foot building. The allowed height in the district is 45 feet, so we're asking for, for that as well. Uh, and also to provide, um, frontage via Chalet Court at 50 feet and for parking spaces. So the zoning contemplates parking at two spaces per unit, but the unit mix here is primarily, uh, one-bedroom units, so we're proposing 1.58 as a ratio versus two. Um, that's consistent with what we see for demand, but it's also consistent with recent zoning in town. Uh, I think it was the smart growth overlay district had a 1.16, I believe, was the ratio. So we're proposing 1.58. Uh, and finally, we're proposing signage. So with respect to the site, again, um, there's a plan that we have. We're proposing, um, a wall sign on both the 128 side and the Endicott Street side, uh, and we're providing, proposing a freestanding side at the Chalet Court entrance and a leasing sign. So there's four signs as opposed to two and for sign area because of those signs. And they're mounted as projection signs or blade signs, so they project a little bit more than, uh, the one foot. I think it projects actually six feet off the building, so we need relief for that as well. So again, exhibit six of the, of the narrative identifies that, but in summary, that's what we're asking for. Uh, in this case, we do satisfy the criteria. As I mentioned, it is a very uniquely situated site. The development area is quite limited from a regulatory standpoint and by nature of having three fronts, you have pretty limiting setbacks all around the site. So you're shrinking the building footprint, the area you can use, so we need a bit more height, uh, to be able to do that and get to be, a little bit closer to what would otherwise be a sideline. Um, it's also, there is an economic hardship, as I mentioned here. This is a site that has been used for uses that just aren't viable in this district here, so multifamily use is both complementary to the uses around it and also a viable use of the site for redevelopment. Uh, and finally, the access that we're providing via Chalet Court, the infrastructure, the stormwater improvements currently aren't there, the redevelopment of the site is all consistent with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and can be granted without, uh, you know, to, to satisfy that standard as well. We submitted a lot of materials. I'm sure you have questions. We're all available, so I'll stop there and we're happy, I'm happy to answer questions on the relief or anyone else on the team's development as well.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, before I turn it over to the board, uh, I just want to go up to the building inspector. And Rich, I just want to be clear, um, although the variance lists that to redevelop the property into a five-story multifamily, uh, this is also a, a use variance, correct? This is asking to go from commercial to residential.
Yeah, they, they list it, um, it's a whole page that they list in there, something in the middle. I actually put it on the, uh, it's on page 32 of the, my, I, the wording of the decisions. I think I just put their, um.
Everything you want.
Copy that on that.
Page three.
Of the wording of decisions. The whole last page, I think, is their variance.
Exhibit six. It's a shot.
Okay. All right, uh, let me just, uh, stand down there with you, Bob.
All right, I, I have a couple of questions and a few issues and so forth. Now, um, you're gonna close the driveway that's there now and you're gonna create, uh, what'd you, what'd you say the name of that?
Chalet Court.
Chalet Court. And that's gonna exit over by where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is, is that where?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just to let you know, I went down there to look at the site Saturday and that light was backed up. People going on Endicott Street from that parking, uh, from that shopping center. Never mind all these apartments. So I don't, I don't know what your traffic study said, but on weekends, that's gonna be a tough exit, okay? And that, that's just a comment. Now, I have a few, few issues. Why, why are you building a garage? No other, uh, apartment complex in this town has got a garage. Why, why do you need a garage? Why can't we just have parking spaces, save yourself a few bucks?
Um, what's the right procedure? Should I address this? Do you want me to wait? I'm happy to.
No, no, far, far away.
All right. So first, on, on Chalet Court, the question regarding access. So this is a, it's sort of a funny site, again, a unique, a unique site. So Endicott Street is actually in state highway jurisdiction, that, that portion of Endicott Street, ending right before the intersection with Chalet Court. So, uh, MassDOT, probably Mass Highway at the time, took Chalet Court on the, on behalf of the town of Danvers to lay that out and only granted access off Endicott Street on a temporary basis until Chalet Court was constructed. So, you know, I think implicit in that is that the state, you know, thought that the best way to access this was through Chalet Court, uh, but the access off Endicott Street is actually only temporary, so we have to close it. So the Chalet Court is going to be constructed and Scott Thornton at VAI can talk to this a lot better than I can, but, uh, it's gonna be constructed within the layout. We have worked with the town, as Rob mentioned, through technical review and the like, to go through how it would work. He can certainly talk about your question about, about function, but it also, we're gonna be putting, uh, the, less trips through here than if you were to reuse the site in its existing condition. So, you know. So, you know, we think it works. Obviously, you need to be satisfied on that, and Scott's here. And as far as a parking structure, you know, it goes a bit to the difficulty of the site. So, it's in the floodplain. It's subject to Chapter 91. You know, in order to make this site sort of landscape, stormwater, to reuse it, the only way you can get it all to work is to put it structured parking. I mean, I can tell you, and Rob can tell you better, you know, the desire is obviously not to spend the money to construct a structure like that, but it does make sense on this site.
So, instead of one ugly building, we're going to get two?
I don't think you're going to get any ugly buildings, but...
Well, 65 feet to me is, you know... But anyway, back to that Chalet Court. My point was, right now, that light can't handle the traffic coming from the stores. You know, I understand what you're going to do, and it makes sense to go off by the light, but that light's got to be changed or regulated or something because you're going to have backup all the way up to the apartments.
So, Scott, do you want to talk to that for a minute?
I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but I know I went there Saturday, and it was backed up, and there's no apartments.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Thornton with Vanessen Associates. And to answer your question, we're going to do a detailed review of the traffic operations at that signal, at the 128 ramp signals, and the other locations as suggested by DOT. And the town has probably also made some comments about us looking at the traffic flow and the traffic conditions at those signals on Endicott Street. But in terms of, as Tim mentioned, in terms of overall traffic generation, this project, the residential development, would generate about a third less traffic than the hotel and the restaurant use. So, it's going to be a reduction from what the site generated previously.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? But they came in and out of different entrances than this.
Oh, right.
They weren't merging with the stores.
But, and I would agree with that, but there's some other issues involved with that limited access, that write-in, write-out-only access, where they would have to go through one, two, three intersections to be able to get to wherever they needed to in terms of making U-turns to reverse directions, both to get in and to get out. So, I don't disagree with you that we'll have to look at the impacts from the additional residences on that intersection, but it's a high-capacity intersection. It's probably some issues with signals. Sometimes things happen with signal equipment, and they reset themselves to default values, and they don't service all the traffic demands that they're originally designed for. But that's something that we'll look at when we get into the traffic analysis.
One of the things I suggest you look at is putting an island somehow in there. What happens is people who go shopping there, parked on the other side, on the McDonald's side.
Yep.
Instead of going around and getting in line, they cut across, and they block traffic. Okay? And if they were kind of an island, so they couldn't do that, so they could... Now, I don't know whether you can reconfigure their parking lot, but that's an issue right now that, you know...
Yeah, it's an existing concern.
It really has nothing to do with you, but it's going to affect you.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, to the extent that we can do that, that we can make those changes, you know, we'll look at it. But I think, you know, the design that we have effectively can move our traffic in and out of Endicott Street.
Okay.
Additional questions, Bob?
No, I'm not through. I've got a few. All right. Now, the off-street parking, you're going to cut it down to... From 416 to 330. So, you're going to save 80... 86 spaces. So, let's assume every one-bedroom has a one automobile, and every two-bedroom has two automobiles. And where are the guests going to park? Have you got guest parking?
Yes, there is. There is guests in this country. Yeah. So, 10 spaces, yes. There are 10 guest spaces.
There's what?
There are 10 guest spaces.
For an apartment house this big, that's all you've got is 10 guest?
Yeah.
Wow. All right. Let's move on to the signage. Why do you need four signs?
Yep. So, do we have the... So, there's... So, again, just for orientation, I know it may be hard to see, but Chalet Court entrance is right here.
Yeah, there should be one at the entrance. I agree.
Yeah, so there's a freestanding sign there. Two signs, the one... The one here and the one down here, those are shown as... Those are signs we're taking off the property. It's signs that are at the property now that are being removed.
Wait a minute. Why do you need them?
They're coming off. So, we're taking off two that are there.
Those are abandoned anyway. The property's been closed for two years. Those signs can no longer be used.
So, those are... So, just to clarify, as far as what you're seeing on the plan, though, those two are being removed.
Yeah, well, they have to be.
So, there's one at the entrance, and then there's one right here and right here. So, those are on the 128 side of the Endicott Street to identify the project. The site is in a strange spot, whether it's through the existing access point or through Chalet Court. There is a wayfinding function here to be able to show where the project is and where the entrance is. The only other sign we're asking for is over the leasing office on the wall.
Wait a minute. You're having a sign on 128 to show where an apartment building is?
Yes.
Why?
Site identification.
There's a sign there that says Endicott Street on 128.
Yep.
I mean, you want more signs in Walmart, and you're not a business. And if I'm not mistaken, you want them lit all night long, too.
Yes, we are asking for relief to have them.
Holy cow. It's like you're running a casino over there. No, no. Let me tell you this. If you want my vote, you ain't getting it with four signs. I'll tell you that right now.
Understood.
All right, let's move on. The affordable housing aspect, you want to go from 12.5% to 10%. Well, as a member of this... A citizen of this town, that just... After we all said and done, we just break even, right? I don't want to break even. I want to win a little bit. So, I'm not happy about going to 10% when you need 12.5%. And let's see, what was the other one I had here? Yeah, why do you need those signs lit all night long? Every business in town closes at 11:00, or the signs shut down.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's just for wayfinding. That's why we're...
I think you're overreaching on that, brother. I have no other way.
Thank you, Bob. Becky.
Okay. Do you have a picture of the parking garage?
I don't know.
A rendering of the parking garage?
We don't have that.
No.
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 And what about the signs? Do you have renderings of the signs?
Signs are showing the render. Not a standalone.
It's going to be very hard for you to see them from here. I'm happy to...
Okay. Typically, when we approve signs, we get something from the sign company. We see exactly what they're going to look like, the size, the color, the font.
Yep.
We know exactly what's going to be installed or constructed, and with a plan showing where each of those signs would be, and then, I mean, we've... I'm sure we've all been to the site already. I mean, I sat down there with the police officer who was trying to make sure the homeless people weren't breaking in, and, you know, we're aware of this site, okay? It's not new to us. But we would typically get a sign plan, and we would go down there with that plan, and we would sit in those locations and be able to see what those signs are going to look like. So, I didn't see anything, and I would be looking for that. I also agree with Bob that four signs is probably not necessary.
We can get you more...
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry. I think I cut. Okay. We can get you more detail on the signage. It's just preliminary in nature right now, so it's a bit more of concept, is frankly why it wasn't provided, but we can get some more detail too.
Okay, so, you have to understand what we approve is what we approve, so...
Right, and we're... I mean, if...
I understand this is the first meeting, and we're going to have discussion over this. It's a huge project, but...
Sure.
Once we approve it, it's approved, and...
Right, understood.
Okay.
Yep.
So, how did you come up with the number of units?
Rob, I think I've got plenty of...
And the one-bedroom, two-bedroom configuration.
Yes, we looked at the site and what capacity we...
Can you take your mask off?
I'm sorry, I forgot.
I know, it's hard.
We looked at the size of the site and the unique characteristics, what kind of building we could construct economically on the site, and looked at our typical units and the unit mix that we thought was most appropriate here, which is about 2/3 one-bedroom, 1/3 two-bedrooms. Currently, we're not planning any three-bedroom units. Based on that unit mix and our typical sizes of units, which we've designed and built, we know they comply with ADA and all the other regulations that we have to abide by. We built the building from that, and the end result was the 208 units.
Okay. And how did you come to the idea that 20 feet over what's allowed would be reasonable in that area?
Yeah, the bill... Because of the irregular shape of the site, it's not a rectangular, it's, as you can see the shape. We have minimum dimension for each unit and then the corridor in between, and with... So, basically, just stretching and moving the building around, we couldn't make it fit with any kind of central courtyard without that relief on the side that we're talking about.
Okay. Well, I have a lot of thoughts, but I'll move on and let everybody else ask their questions.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but do you know how many rooms were in the days in?
Yeah, it's in here.
I didn't really see that.
129.
129, and you're proposing 208 multifamily units.
Yes.
That's correct?
So, there's a traffic comparison in there that identifies the square footage of restaurant, the units, and it actually results in less of an impact from that standpoint.
Okay. This obviously goes to site review.
Yes. Rich, this would go to planning?
Yeah. No further questions.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff?
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. I have plenty of comments, but I'll hold them.
Thank you. And Ken, questions, not comments.
So, do you have... You're going to have elevators or something in there for, like, older folk to get up?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you. Corinne?
I'm looking at the plan, and it looks as if all of your parking for the units is going to be in the garage, so there's no outside parking except for the 10 guest parking spaces. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
And how many floors is the parking garage? Is it going to be the same height?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be the same height as the building, and all the parking for the units, each resident will have spaces in the garage. The 10 spaces that are on the surface in front of the leasing office are mainly for visitors to that leasing center, for tenants who are considering living there, or for any member of the public who might visit. Also, off-hours used for visitors' parking. We will have some visitor parking in the garage itself, just in case those 10 spaces are not adequate on the first level.
Now, you also reference in your study that there are two bus lines that kind of run through that area, and they're located on the bridge where 128 is. I know that you're no longer going to have those cutouts onto Endicott Street, but are you going to put in some sort of a pathway for people who want to exit and go up to where the bus stop is?
We will have sidewalks on the property, and we will connect to that to provide pedestrian access to the bus stops.
Okay. And to the building inspector, as part of this site plan, I assume that they do some sort of like a study to figure out what the impact on the schools are going to be. I know that most of these are one-bedrooms, but some of them are two-bedroom. And this is Riverside, I believe, the school district?
I'm not sure about the school district, but they can probably... I mean, this is what they do for a living. They could probably give you an estimate of how many children will actually be in this building.
I didn't... I read over your plan. I didn't see anything as far as like the impact on the schools. Is it in the literature somewhere?
It's not. That was not a requirement of the... What we needed to apply, but as Rich mentions, we do typically do that, particularly in front of the planning board. They usually ask for that type of information, and we're happy to provide it if requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. So, could you tell me the square footage of the one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms?
I can't tell you the exact square footages, but our typical one-bedroom units range from 700 to 900 square feet, and two-bedroom units range from 1,050 to 1,150 square feet. We can provide exact numbers for this concept design if needed.
You guys mentioned at the top that you've had... I thought I heard multiple meetings with different groups within the town.
Technical review.
Technical review. And what was the outcome of those meetings? Is that what... I guess, let me ask it another way. So, you had multiple meetings for technical review, and is that what shapes the height and size of this project?
Yes, we had two technical review committee meetings. One early on in the development of the project. We presented our plans and received comments. I'd say the vast majority of the department heads were in that meeting. We heard from fire, police, town engineer, electric department. Planning, of course, was there. So, we discussed all the specifics that are in front of you today, the height, the size and general orientation, the access. We spent a lot of time. In fact, that's the reason we went back for a second technical review committee was to show them the progress on our response to their comments on the main building, but also to flesh out and provide all the details they asked for in the access road. There was quite a bit of discussion on how our traffic would interact with the shopping center at that signal. We expect the planning board will ask us to study and retime that signal because the thought is that it's not operating correctly. We also do have some Iowans to provide some more, I guess, guidance for traffic so that it's not a pell-mell of people driving whichever way they want. We do have some Iowans within the Chalet Court right-of-way that's not on the adjacent property that we've proposed, and the town departments have agreed with the concept plan that that would be a good way to go. and the town departments have agreed with the concept plan that that would be a good way to go.
What changes would have to take place as far as bringing in larger gas lines and water?
We have been in touch with all the utilities and we believe, well, we have word from the utilities that the capacity is there in Endicott Street. We would tie into those utility connections. And I'm not sure those are shown on our plans or not, but I can have the civil engineer speak to that.
So would it be a larger line than what exists?
I don't know. I can see if our civil engineer who's here knows the answer to that. I expect the gas line would be larger, but water might be about the same size given the capacity at the hotel and Denny's.
Are there any, I know the high-tension wires kind of run near the site. Is there any town easements, electrical easements or otherwise?
There is, you're right, there is that power line easement that's off the property but parallels the property line on the southern side of the site. There is also a gas.
I'm sorry, on which side?
The southern, plant south of the site.
So on the water, the Riverside? I don't see it, that's why I'm. I mean, it looks like a stone wall is shown there, but I don't see any easement. I see New England Power at 154 Endicott.
Yeah, Brian McCarthy with RJ O'Connell Associates.
Movie mask?
Brian McCarthy with RJ O'Connell Associates, civil engineer for the project. The power line runs off the property, it runs through the adjacent shopping, Endicott Square. I'll show you right here.
Okay. So that's where it runs, but is there any easements?
There's no easement related to the power lines on the property. There is an easement on the property related to the gas main. The gas main that runs through this property, Elgoncon Gas. And that runs, I'll just show it on this plan here. Right through this area, right here.
Kind of the center of where the building is, or proposed building is going to be?
It's, the proposed buildings will be further from that gas line than the existing motel building.
And, okay, thank you. And I guess the last question, this is more just a mystery to me. You show the courtyard as the, in the center of this building. What's the plan for that courtyard? Doesn't sound like you're anticipating many families. I definitely don't see any grassy areas, although I know that kind of tends to run into the planning boards and site review. But I'm just wondering, what's the plan for that courtyard?
Yeah, we do courtyards in many of our buildings, particularly of this design. And so that'll be a combination of either grass or turf with outdoor seating, usually outdoor dining, grilling areas if allowed by the municipality, passive outdoor recreation areas for the residents to use.
So outside the courtyard, outside the confines of the building, will there be any of that?
There's a passive recreation area that will just be landscaped buffer along the south, adjacent to the river. Currently, that's paved parking for the hotel. We'll be taking that back and adding more landscaping outside the building.
Okay. I guess that's all I had. Is there any additional questions from the board?
Can I just ask about environmental? Are there any environmental issues since we've had, we do have contamination in that area with the river?
Yeah, we did do a full Phase 1 environmental site assessment. There were no recognized environmental conditions at the site. We did the historical research, we did find, did research on the adjacent properties. So we noticed all those contaminated sites in the area that I think you are referencing.
So no borings on that site? You just, you did a Phase 1?
We did Phase 1, we did borings and we did chemical testing as part of that. There is, there are some hazardous building materials in the existing buildings that we've studied and identified and those will be remediated as part of the demolition of the existing buildings. Asbestos.
And then just, I wanted to ask if, have you built this building, this style building, anywhere locally that we could go drive by?
We have, we've, a number of good examples that I can provide you with.
What town?
Stonem.
Stonem, you said?
Stonem is the closest of this type building. Property is called Maeve, M-A-V-E. And I can send along more details.
M-A-V-E?
M-A-V-E. Thank you. They don't let me name the projects, unfortunately.
All right, yeah, I would like to do that. I would like to see what it looks like. And it has similar courtyard and everything.
It has similar courtyards, it has a attached but connected garage just something proposing here.
A garage also? Okay, great, that would be terrific.
Thanks, Becky. I can't tell from your rendering, but is there decks or patios off of any of these units? It's just too far away, I just can't see it.
Yes, we are showing some decks and patios. And so not all the units, but probably 50% of the units will have outdoor space.
Any additional questions from the board? I'll go out to the audience on, 152 Endicott Street, former Denny's Days Inn location. Mr. Bradstreet?
The Bradstreet Town Media Mall Precinct 1. These two buildings are very tall. Is there, are there any other buildings in the area that are this tall, taller? Or how much shorter than these two? And if these two buildings put up, will, at the heights, will they look as out of place as the tower looks on 114 by Route 1?
I think I can answer on the apartment building and I believe the swingaway. Rich, is that correct?
That's five stories.
That's five-story?
I'm talking about in that general area, I'm not talking about the other side of the town.
I'm not aware of anything. Rich, would you know that?
The hospital is probably on the side that faces the river, might be four stories.
MGH? Yep. So four stories is the highest in that vicinity, four.
And will it look as out of place as those buildings, as the tower does? Route 114.
That's in the eyes of the beholder, that one. Can't answer that one for you.
At least you tried, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none? I'm sorry. Oh, right there. Wait a minute, you're still here?
She listened to the whole thing.
You were hiding.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I am here on behalf of Eastern Bank, trustee of the Animus Sis Trust. The trust is the owner of property at 160 Endicott Street, which is the Salem Bank location. Also 180 Endicott Street, which is the shopping center that's been referenced, as well as 182 Endicott Street, which is the McDonald's. Basically, all of the properties that currently use the intersection. That's been being discussed tonight, Chalet Court. And I have questions about the intersection. It appears from the plans, and they're schematic in nature, they're not engineered drawings. It appears that perhaps some of the work that is being proposed for the construction of Chalet Court will cause work to be done on the Animus Sis Trust property. Specifically, it looked like there were some median strips or buffer strips or islands or whatever. There has been no permission granted for any work on the Animus Sis Trust property. Mr. Signetti picked up on one item here where there was a mention that there will be fewer trips generated, fewer trip generations than the Denny's and the motel. And I think that is quite true, that there will be fewer trips generated from this proposed use. However, it will be a significant increase in trips utilizing this intersection because there is currently no connection from the Denny's site to this signalized intersection. So it is going to be a significant increase in traffic to that intersection. The way Chalet Court is laid out is very different than the access coming into the site now through this signalized intersection. It is a significant change to this intersection to then utilize Chalet Court. And it's not particularly visible from the plans that were submitted with the application. When you come in the signalized intersection, once Chalet Court is constructed, it is almost an immediate left, quite a significant left turn to be on Chalet Court from what is there now. And that, it is a real concern to see how that lays out and how, if that will even work. There was a mention from the traffic consultant that they're going to do a traffic study. The traffic study needs to be done now for this board to have that information. Mr. Signetti referenced the current capacity of that intersection and we're adding a lot more traffic to that intersection without a traffic study to see if the intersection can even handle it as currently configured or as what's being proposed with a significant change to the layout of the intersection. So that really has to be answered, I think, and you have to have that information when you're looking at a use variance for this area. You need to know the traffic impacts, it's very important. I have a question. Does the applicant know what the approval process is to allow the construction of Chalet Court? Chalet Court was laid out as was indicated during the presentation by Mass DOT for the benefit of the town, but who has to give the approval for the construction? Is it the town? Is it Mass DOT? I'm just curious. I'm wondering what the thought process is on what has to be done for that authorization. So our concern is traffic and how that works because this signalized intersection is the only access to the three properties, 160 and 180. It's not the only access to McDonald's, but for 160 and 180, it is the only access. Currently, the Denny's site does have access elsewhere off of Endicott Street. But if this is going to be the proposal, we have to know that it works. It has to work for the proposed use and it certainly has to work for the existing businesses that are there and have been there for a long time. And that's very important. The last item I have is, I did not, I did go to town hall and I did look at the application and the filing. I did not see anywhere in the application package elevation drawings for the buildings for which a 20-foot variance in height is being sought. I didn't see any elevation drawings. I saw some renderings of the apartment building tonight. There was, there were no renderings of the garage, but I didn't see elevation drawings to support the use variant, or the height variance that is being requested. And I think I counted 14 variances being requested for this particular project. So the concern is traffic, the concern is height. To some degree, maybe not a lot for us, but should be a concern for the board and we should, we should certainly be seeing some renderings that will show us the height of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will ask one additional time. Any additional public comment?
Can you ask them to answer her questions? Sorry. Their questions?
I think there's enough, Becky, that there's multiple things, things you've even brought up. But yeah, I guess if you could address those, maybe those three points, particularly the traffic.
Sure. I think the first question was, will it cause work on the abutting property outside of the right-of-way? And the answer is no. The design of Chalet Court that is shown here is entirely within the right-of-way that was taken, the town right-of-way in 1972. And the layout's the same as well. So we're not changing the layout, it's the existing town layout.
So it's your position that you do not need any approval to make any changes on Chalet Court?
No, slightly different, Mr. Chair. So we do need to work with the town to build it out, but we don't, we're not looking for changes to the existing right-of-way that exists now.
Okay, I think Attorney McCann's question though was what or how is that approval process proceed? Is it the town, is it the state?
Yeah, the town.
Is it the town?
Yeah. And it's something we've been engaged with the town on. And as Rob mentioned, there've been designs back and forth with the town about the layout and it incorporates the town's input. And I guess the only other question was, traffic information, elevations. There was a traffic memo submitted with the application. If the board has additional questions, we're happy to answer that. And I can, if there weren't elevations, we can get, we can get those to you.
Well, what about the point she made regarding the former site didn't exit in this manner? So now we're going to funnel all this traffic instead of directly onto Endicott Street to this lane?
Sure. Apologies. So it did, it didn't, it doesn't clearly come through Chalet Court because Chalet Court doesn't exist. But it does utilize that intersection because you can't take a left into that site. You have to come back and do a U-turn through that intersection now. So if you were to reutilize this site for a hotel and restaurant and like, you do still need to use that intersection. So that intersection is not, is not without impact in its current condition. And in fact, you know, I've worked on projects over the years where by taking away an awkward movement like that, you do actually increase the efficiency of the intersection. So people do have to come down, use that intersection, do a U-turn and then come into Endicott Street, which is frankly why Chalet Court was taken, to provide that direct access to the site because Mastod didn't want that access off Endicott Street.
And as far as elevation drawings?
Oh, sorry, I thought I addressed that. Yes, we're happy to get those to you.
Okay. Additional comment? Yeah?
My name is Silas Patel and I'm a current owner of the property. And I just wanted to mention to you guys that the access which is right now was only granted for 25 years when the building was constructed. So no matter what kind of use we are, we can do to the property, has to use the Chalet Court. Because that access will not be allowed by Mass DOT anymore. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments from the public on 152 Endicott? Okay, I'm going to come back to the board. However, I do want to summarize before I go to the board. It seems to me, I heard.
I just have one quick question.
Yep, go.
Has anyone reached out to the owner of the, of that little mall? Nancy's client? Has anyone reached out to you as far as this project?
So I can answer that? So we, yes, we have, not, I'm sorry, Attorney McCann? Okay, not to Attorney McCann. There was a different attorney, Attorney Kaiser, Henry Kaiser, who we did coordinate with. And we did send him an email prior to this application and let him know we were filing. And so, yes, we have.
Because I think, obviously, during the construction of this project, everything's going to have to go through your client's parking lot. And then when they construct in the street, I assume it's going to be the town who's going to do that construction. But then if the project's done and these people who live at this site, they're going to go through a public way, but then they're into a private parking lot.
So they never actually go through a private parking lot? The whole thing is a public right-of-way. But I appreciate your point and we are happy to coordinate with the abutter. Frankly, we had been in the dialogue between Attorney Kaiser, we needed to file. So, you know, we're more than happy to. So, you know, we're more than happy to, to connect afterwards. But just to be clear on that point, it never goes through private property. It's a right-of-way the entire way.
Okay. And you're, obviously, your client's aware of the, the right-of-way. But I, I think you guys need to meet and you need to discuss all of these different issues.
We agree.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Okay. So again, before, I, I think it's important to strove the board and get additional feedback and comments. However, I made a few notes throughout your presentation and questions that came from the board. It seems that the board would like more details on signage. That we would like some type of rendering or something on the garage. We also would like elevation drawings. I think you clarified the approval process on Chalet Court. And did I miss anything? So I think those are kind of outstanding items. I think, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think as far as I can see, those, that information will be needed before this board can make any decision.
You also need the, the traffic study, like the formal traffic study, not just the memo.
Did I hear you wrong? I thought you said the traffic study that's submitted in this packet is what you're-
Not for that area.
Not for that area. So an additional traffic study that I guess details the, the lights specifically.
I, I think, I think Scott heard the, the comments then. We'll, we'll put something together.
And again, I, I think it's important to get some of the feedback from this board on top of those other things that are needed. So I'm going to-
Did you have signs on yours?
Yes.
I'm sorry? What?
Signs, details.
Yes, sign, that was the first thing. So Bob, comments?
Comments?
Yes.
All right. I think the building's too tall. I'm not crazy about the garage, but I could probably live with it. I think the assumption that every one-bedroom apartment's only going to have one or one and a half cars is not correct. A deal breaker for me, four signs, four lit signs. You know, Becky wants a, a rendering of where they're going to go. I don't care where they're going to go. Two signs that you're allowed, and that's it. Also, and nobody mentioned this, 10% on the affordable housing. Like I said, we're just breaking even. We might as well just stay the way we are. Why go through all this trouble just to get 10%? All that's going to do is, is, is make everything even. I want, I want a gain. I want 12, 12 and a half percent. So that 10% is a deal breaker for me.
Thank you, Bob. Becky?
I also think it's too big for the area. I want to see more information about the height, elevation drawings, the garage, et cetera, so I can go out there and have a better view of it. But initially, I just feel it's just too much. And we don't have anything like that in town. And I agree with Bob on the affordable housing. We, it's 12 and a half for a reason. The town came up with that number for a reason, so I think we have to, to stay with that. I, I want to drive by Stonem. I want to get a better sense of what this property would look like. It's hard to envision that on this site. But I think that we all believe that we have to do something there. We are happy that you've come with this proposal. It's, it's just a blighted site, and we want it out of our town. So we appreciate your effort to, to try to do something. We just got to get to the right place with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, Ken.
Thank you. I'm with them on the size of the building as far as height. That's way too big. We've gone up 79 units, plus 79 units. That's why you're running into parking space issues, which you had to go down to 1.58 per unit. It's because you have too many units. And most importantly, I think, the traffic indicate, impact on that intersection, which we all know, we live in Dampers, is huge, huge. So I don't like any of that. And I'm with Bob. I don't like the garage, but I may be able to deal with it.
Thanks, Ken. Jeff?
I agree with my other board members. The building's too big, too many units, too tall. The 10% versus the 12.5% affordable is a breaker for me. I will not vote for it without the 12 and a half percent. I don't think there's enough parking for visitors. I don't think there's too many signs, and I want to see the details, as Bob indicated. So those are all my same complaints as well.
Thank you. And Ken?
Yeah, more of the same for me. So the 45 feet, is that three floors or two floors?
The current building?
Yeah, the current one.
Three, three floors.
Yeah, I wouldn't actually go higher than that. I think that's plenty high enough. The, the garage too, I mean, 25 feet, if you could fit all the cars in there, I probably wouldn't go higher than that. So I guess for those two, for me, you wouldn't even need a variance. I mean, that's just too tall. The all-night illumination of the signs is, no way. I wouldn't go, go with that at all. And I agree too, that's a deal breaker too. I wouldn't go any less than the 12.5% for affordable housing. That's just not, I don't think it's fair to the community. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ken. Corinne?
My biggest concern is, is the traffic flow in, in the light. So I, I really think we need a traffic study in order to determine what the best way to proceed with that is.
Thank you, Corinne. By my count here, and I think Attorney McCann alluded to this, you're asking for relief on 14 different items. Not one of them comes in at the requirement or better. They all are under it. So I think it's a little bit of a stretch to think we would approve of this kind of project. And one, and I think, quite frankly, this is the biggest one, this is a commercial lot. And you're asking to put residential on it. I don't know if this board, quite frankly, has the authority to make that arbitrary change for the town of Dampers. To me, I see that as a bigger issue than anything, that you're asking to put residential property in a commercial zone. You know, my feeling is maybe that's something more for town meeting. I don't think it's for the seven people on this board to decide if we should allow residential units in a commercial area. However, I will listen to further presentations, but I, I really think that's a big one. And I agree with my fellow board members. The signage I would not go for. This is not a retail store, and we, we don't even allow four signs on retail. The garage is, and the building is way too big. I think it's too many units. I think the traffic will be a nightmare. And when you guys do a project of this size and then leave, we're stuck with the mess. So those are my comments at this point in time. Clearly, you don't have enough information for us to vote on it tonight. So I, I'm assuming you're going to ask for a continuance, and it's just a matter of when we're going to continue it to. Our next meeting is November 2nd, and I believe after that, November 30th? Yes.
Would there be something from the technical review?
To provide to us?
Minutes?
Yeah, do you? Sorry, go ahead, then.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, so I, I think the board's also looking for maybe some input on the technical reviews that you've had with the town. Again, anything, so I guess what's ironed out, when we want to continue this to? November 2nd or November 30th?
November, would request a continuance to November 30th.
November 30th, okay. And we would ask that any new or additional information that's to be provided to the board is provided by? The Tuesday, the board. And that's so that info can get out to the board members for our review. And that would include the town's technical review info. And I think, did I miss anything, fellow board members? And do you have any questions based on the comments from the board?
No, we thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you. So can I get a motion to continue this to November 30th?
So moved.
I get a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We see you November 30th.
Is that, is that 7:00 PM as well?
Yeah, and that site is where?
Holden Richmond Middle School.
Middle school, which is not this one.